Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the turn off. We're here tonight to start. We're going to listen to two presentations tonight on ideas of what we can do with the Illinois property and the town owns. But I'll start the meeting off, and I welcome our park board. All of our members of our park board here, along with our town council and our staff, from our staff and our park staff. So, everyone's attendance, please rise for the pleasure of the evening. And just to remember to the public, this is a study session, so it's only a gathering to get ideas and to discuss ideas. There'll be no voting and no ballots of honors. We'll start off with the roll call. Our deputy clerk, Kristy Klein, please tell a roll call.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvinitis.
Here.
Councilwoman Rob Ganslaw.
Present.
Councilwoman Tom Schmidt.
Here.
Park Board member Brad Bassett.
Here.
Tom Malnowski.
Here.
Ed Rippey.
Here.
Joseph Clark. Nicole Kelly.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Public Works Director Chad Nandork.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Deputy Court Treasurer Kristy Klein. Present.
And Kristy, can you please announce our park department?
Absolutely. Our Director of the Park Department, John Novasich.
Here.
His Assistant Irene Varelas.
Here.
Staff members Carl Morris and Josh Barnes.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Our first presentation tonight is from the Northern League Baseball League, who has a couple of teams here in Lake County and is looking to possibly have another team. So, I'm going to turn over the presentation to their owner, Mr. Bob Popperbaum.
Thank you, President Schmidt, for the introduction. I appreciate it very much. Yes, I am the President of the Northern League. I'm also the owner of the Northwest Indiana Oilman. Hopefully, many of you have heard of the Oilman over the years. We've been in waiting for the last 12. So, what I wanted to do today is to talk about the league and talk about our expansion plans and why we think that Shererville would be an excellent place for us to put another franchise. So, with introductions, you already heard from myself, I have here Ralph Flores, who also owns the Lake County Corn Dogs, which was the newest team in our league last year and was the league champion. Also, as a part of our presentation, I have Jonathan Cole, the founding principal of Pedulum Studios, which is a partner of the Northern League. Jonathan is a very highly regarded and experienced architect based out of Kansas City, and he designs ballpark and facilities all across the country. So, one of the first things that I want to talk about is baseball. It's the one constant that really connects us as Americans across the country in cities and towns that we live in. It's America's favorite pastime. It's played outdoors in good weather, unlike today. It has great food, and it has smiling faces of the fans that attend games, as long as the home team's winning. But I think that a lot of opportunities for smiling faces are not just what the outcome of the games are. It's become a tradition of American families, and it's an emotional connection to our past. It's something that our grandfathers and fathers have passed on to us, and I think that that's very important. And minor league baseball has become a shared family experience. Now, baseball remains America's pastime. These numbers are pre-COVID, so I took 2019 numbers, which more reflect a normal time for outdoor activities. Minor league baseball, Major League Baseball drew almost 115 million people in the summer and spring of 2019. That's five times larger than any of the other professional leagues, and that's important to remember. There's a lot of opportunity to connect with the fans. Now, baseball in America, I'm going to steal a little line, probably all heard at one time or another from Terence Mann, fictitious writer in Field of Dreams, but he said the one constant through the years has always been baseball. It has marked the time of our existence. Now, professional baseball was first played by the Cincinnati Red Stockings in 1869. That's four years after the town of Shererville was founded. At that time, the first transcontinental railroad was completed at Promontory Point in Utah, connecting both coasts with each other. Ulysses S. Grant was President of the United States at that point. Then, in 1876, the National League was formed, that seven years later after the first professional team came on scene. During that period of time, the United States celebrated its centennial, and Alexander Graham Bell invented a telephone, so he was the father of mass communications. And then, yes, everybody knows, the battle of Little Big Horn was fought in that year, and Heinz Ketchup was discovered. So, again, baseball running concurrent with what was happening in America. The American League was founded 25 years later in 1901, and in 1901, United States Steel, which was very important to the region, was created by Andrew Carnegie. And then Teddy Roosevelt was President, but most importantly, oil was discovered in Texas, and that changed everything in the United States. In 1903, Major League Baseball, the entity we know today, was formed, combining both the National League and the American League together. In 1903, the Ray Brothers successfully had powered flight, and the first World Series was held, and it was between the Boston Americans and the Pittsburgh Pirates. Does anybody know who won that game? Boston. So, when you think about it, the next year will be the 150th anniversary of the first professional team, which was created in 1869. That's pretty impressive when you look at our fabric. Baseball is something that we created and is uniquely American. And as the next chart demonstrates, professional baseball, there's only 30 teams. Now, whether you're Sox or Cubs fan, I saw, didn't see any Cubs hats tonight, but they should get equal billing here. There's only 30 teams, only 780 players that are employed at the top level. Below that, there's over 5,000 American players that are trying to get there. They're either part of the American, or the Major League Baseball's affiliated teams, or partner teams, or independent leagues. But now, baseball is played in 18 different countries in the United States, and the World Baseball Classic will start next month, and there'll be a spotlight on the teams. But it's a very impressive number when you think about it, how baseball's played across the globe. Now, as far as minor league baseball goes, the NABL was organized in 1901, but about five decades later, there were over 500 minor league teams playing in 58 different leagues. That's pretty impressive growth. Now, in 1963, Major League Baseball reorganized the minor leagues and reduced the number of teams and changed the classification system, and it became what we know today as triple-A, double-A, single-A baseball. Now, but in 1975, there were only 106 minor league teams left in the country. Now, that's a loss of 400 teams in about an 18-year period of time from the 50s. That's a lot of teams that have just gone out, a lot of teams in effect in small towns and cities in America that drew its pride from their team having a team there locally. My dad, in fact, played minor league baseball for the New York Giants in the mid-50s, and he played at Class D level, and he was out in Muskogee, Oklahoma. I don't think my mom could find the city at that time. There was no Google to find it. By 2020, what had happened? Major League Baseball took control of the minors. They took them over completely, eliminated the NABL, and they owned them. In 2021, they decided to eliminate another 40 affiliates out of minor league baseball. That's 1,200 playing jobs. That's 1,200 opportunities where players don't have anymore to advance up through the ranks of minor league baseball. And in 2022, the amateur draft was reduced to only 20 rounds. It used to be 45 rounds. They eliminated another 25 rounds out of the draft. That's another 750 playing opportunities that would not be available to players to be drafted. I can't tell you how many countless players have gone on and had great careers that were drafted in the 30th round because they worked hard and they got seen. But the way that the economy as a baseball are today, they're shrinking their footprint. Now, what does a minor league baseball team bring to a community? Brings added revenue to the community, but most importantly, brings affordable family fun. And it brings also the excitement and branding recognition and the pride that surrounds that about having your own team in your own town and supporting it and bragging about it across the regional area. It's also the community connection point. It's where everybody in town could gather to rally around their club, to have a fun night out with their family, and it also increases tourism. Now, the numbers I'm going to read to you are a little old, but again, they're pre-COVID. So, the state of Indiana, which produces a lot of information on tourism, there's 81 million total visitors in 2018 to the state of Indiana. But most importantly, they spent $13.2 billion. That's a sizable sum. Indiana's a big state, so there's a lot of points of connection, but I think where we sit as a region with a close proximity to Illinois and Chicago, there's a lot of people that could come down and certainly enjoy themselves, and it adds the quality of life of its citizens. Now, affordable prices, this is again, pre-COVID numbers, but the average cost to go into a minor league baseball game for a family of four, that includes ticket prices and food and drinks, promotional items and parking, is $68, okay? Compare that to 75% more expensive to go to a major league game, and if you went to an NFL game, it's like 90% more expensive. It's significant. Minor league baseball is affordable, which means you have more opportunities to get more fans to come back to the ballpark. It's also taxable revenue for your community. This is just merchandise. It does not include food and beverage, which is probably 50 times more when you count food, beverages, and beer and alcohol. Now, Major, uh, minor league baseball, as you all know, there's fun promotions, there's, you know, opportunities to honor military, police and fire, dogs bark in the park, Elvis nights, movie nights. There's a lot of opportunities to have a lot of fun at a minor league baseball game. It also has awesome mascots. Not only mascots for the game, but mascots that you could send out into community to basically build goodwill across a wide area for your club and for your town. Cool team logos. I mean, logos is everything because it's the brand identity for the club, but we have a lot of them. Now, with regards to the Northern League, you know, our mission statement is pretty simple. It's basically provide and promote independent minor league baseball, affordable family entertainment in cities where we operate. We want to have people come to our games and enjoy themselves, go home and want to come back. Repeat customers are very important. Now, if you look at a little history of the Northern League, it was founded in 1902. For most of the 20th century, it was a minor league affiliated league. It was, spent most of its time in the 20th century as a D-league, so in the old classification system. In 1963, Major League Baseball designated it a single-A league, and then after 1971 season, basically mothballed the league, became dormant until 1993, when it reemerged as an independent minor league. It's comprised of minor league free agents and MLB draftable players pursuing their dreams to one day play in the major leagues. It's a pretty big dream, but we've had players in the league that have gone on. Now, what the league has produced, and you're going back 100-plus years, is 11 Hall of Famers. And when I show you their names and faces, I think a lot of us will recognize who they were. And since 1993, over two dozen players have actually reached and played in the major leagues, along with 150 players who signed minor league contracts that, you know, some of them are still in the minor leagues working their way toward their dream. But it gets harder because the funnel gets tighter and there's less opportunity. Our Hall of Fame alumni includes some of the biggest names that ever played the game: Hank Aaron, Roger Maris, Willie Stargell, to name a few. Very impressive lineup of all-stars. Northern League recent alumni that have played, J.D. Drew, Kevin Millar, Paul DeYoung, Owen Miller, who's with the Cleveland Guardians now, used to be Indians, and a few other players, all that have played in the league. We're very proud of that. The Northern League, it's all about building a community through the sport of baseball. Fans first. I mean, if, I don't know if anybody follows the Savannah Bananas. If you had, they've created a lot of excitement with their product. They just are going on a 40-city tour, and basically it sold out within, you know, a couple of days. Sold out 40 ballparks, which is quite impressive. But it's all about fans first. They do everything for fans first. It's a lifeblooded community. It's providing quality of life and pride for the towns and cities where we play. It's about building the trust and the traditions. It takes time to build traditions, but it doesn't take a lot of time to build trust. Something easily gotten, easily lost. If you lose it, you basically, you lose a lot of support for your ball club. We like to create atmospheres of affordable family fun. We like to connect with the youth of a community through our kids' clubs, through kid events, through, you know, baseball buddies program. We like to connect a team to the youth, and it creates year-round activation. I'm going to talk a little more about year-round activation. Why do we want to expand? Obviously, we think we have a unique opportunity with Major League Baseball reducing their affiliates, with it becoming harder and longer to play. I think it's a good time for us to expand. We want to be concentrated in northern Indiana. We'd like local ownership groups. You know, they're part of the community, but you know, if they're, if they're not available, then we'll, you know, we'll look outside the community for them. We'd like to minimize club expenses. What do I mean by that? When you see the map, which is, which follows this, we want to reduce travel costs, hotel rooms. That's, you know, money that's outlaid by a club that it can never get back. Of course, we want to establish affordable family fun with every franchise, but we also want to create natural rivalries between cities and towns, and we want to generate intra-city tourism, moving people throughout the greater region. If you look at this map, it's coming through a little dark, but you can see our concentrate, concentration where we want to be in Lake County, opportunities in Porter County, and then, you know, La Porte, and then, you know, we're added Elkhart to our league this year. But everything is, with the expressway grid that we have, it's easy to get from one end of the league to the other. This is a 100-mile box, by 100 miles by east-west, by 50 miles north-south. There are 1.5 million people that live in this box. The cool thing is, if it was a city, it'd be the eighth-largest city in the United States, which is pretty impressive. But we think that this is, creates natural rivalries for, you know, towns and cities across northern Indiana, and there's nothing else like it. Now, why Shererville? Crossroads of the nation. Route 30, Lincoln Highway, was the first transcontinental, transcontinental highway. 35th largest city in the state of Indiana. Your population growth, 50% since 1990. That's pretty impressive. Medium household income is significant. You're a family-oriented community, 20% of your population is under 18 years old. You have 674,000 people that live within a 30-mile drive of Shererville. So, you talk about bringing people over the border, the border's not that far. It's five miles just to the west. It's adjacent to US 30, close access to 41, 65, and 80, 94, and the Illinois, the Iliana Speedway has a history of hosting sporting events at that site. Now, Shererville for us is the ideal location. If you look at the expressway grid, there's 44 million cars a year that travel 80, 94, and another 36 million cars that use 65 as a source of travel. Route 30, I mean, you're in a perfect quadrant for us. You're close by to get everywhere. Iliana track opportunity. There's 200 acres, there's about 100 acres of the track area, and then like another, you know, 100, I'm estimating, of development opportunity to the south for youth sports, for park, for football, for a lot of different local area organizations per taken. And the close proximity to 65, 5.3 miles, eight and a half up to 80, 94, I mean, that's, that's pretty cool. Now, what we're proposing and what we're talking about is what I call the heartbeat of Shererville on Iliana property, with a primary stadium being built, a center with housing development around it, with restaurants and bars and entertainment venues, as well as a complete neighborhood, condos, high-rises that envelop the ballpark, making its own area inside Shererville. We think that there might be $300 million or more dollars of development in that area besides the ballpark. The one thing that everybody has to do in northwest Indiana is grow its housing stock. The people in Illinois are moving out. They're tired of being taxed, they're tired of their governments, and the people are looking for housing in northwest Indiana, which is the next closest area. I mean, if you look at Crump Point and their rapid growth, you can see all the rapid growth that's going to affect everybody else. The Westlake Corridor with the train coming down from Hammond to double-tracking up north, people are going to move here. And I think that an opportunity like this offers a multipurpose stadium that you can activate for about 150 dates out of the year, including during the winter. But I think that they're, and if you use the AstroTurf they have today, the turf is durable, you can have multiple cleated sports, both diamond sports as well as field sports played within it, so you can get a lot more bang for your investment. Now, year-round activation, let's talk for a minute. The Tin Caps, they play at Parkview Field over at Fort Wayne. They had a ballpark that was on the outskirts of Fort Wayne at one point called Memorial Stadium. They worked really hard with the city, and together they brought a ballpark to downtown. One of the things that the ballpark did over a period of years is they activated year-round, and they wanted people utilizing the ballpark. So, they utilize it not just for their games, but they use it for music festivals, they use it for concerts, they use it for food events and, you know, charity events and soccer and a multitude of different things. And it really has helped generate the development around Fort Wayne Parkview Field. And if you have been over there and saw what they built, it was an area that lent itself for a lot of economic development. Now, considerations for you guys that I want to talk about. Desire for live sporting events and entertainment, is there in the city? Is there government support and community interest in having something developed on that site? And then what kind of funding sources are available to do something as we propose? And then stadium development at Iliana? And then next steps. Funding sources, I identified six funding sources. Tiff, you guys have already done that, so check that box. The Indiana Ready Funds. Governor Hoakum has on record of wanting another $500 million in ready grants available to be spent and utilized in the state of Indiana. The Edit Economic Development Income Tax. These are, this is unique to Indiana, and there were two ballparks in Kokomo and Lafayette that were built, both built using these funds. The state of Indiana also has development funds for entertainment venues that are available, and beverage and hotel taxes. I know that you need, in a lot of cases, you got to get special permission from the state to be able to enact them, but it's not a heavy lift, it's having a good reason to do that. And then there's also what I call private investment. There's organizations like the Dean and Barbara White Foundation that lend itself to giving to municipalities for economic development reasons, and that certainly, the Iliana Project will certainly qualify for that. Now, to recap, baseball's been with us since almost the whole time Shererville has been, well, longer or a little bit shorter than the time the town of Shererville has been here. Baseball is part of America. Minor league takeover, minor league baseball, Major League Baseball takeover of minor leagues has reduced playing opportunities for players. We are giving opportunities to players to move on, and we think that the Iliana area is ripe for development and needs to be developed, and, you know, with the housing component, it gives you property taxes. It gives you food and beverage taxes. It gives, it becomes an economic engine once it's developed, you know, to the town of Shererville, and I think it's very important. One of the things that I want to do right now is to bring in a friend of mine, Jonathan Cole. I've known him for 15 years, he's funding principal of Pedulum Studio in Kansas City. One thing Jonathan's been doing, he's been developing ballparks and concepts like what we're talking about across the country, doing it actively. He's involved in some pretty big projects, including the discussion about building the Kansas City Ballpark in downtown Kansas City. He started that conversation. Things and ideas he put forth have kind of brought the Kansas City Royals to look at what's going on downtown. And, you know, he's looking at stadium development as being part of the economic engine that drives a lot of towns and cities in the United States. Jonathan, are you there?
I'm here. How's my audio? Is it okay? Give me a thumbs up. Okay? Don?
Oh, you can see me, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you everyone for having me. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm on a construction site right now. It's almost baseball season, it's about to start, and so I'm flying all over the place trying to make sure these projects happen. I can't see the presentation.
I'll get it in a minute, right here. Let me find it. I'll get it in a minute, right here, let me find it. Can you see it, Jonathan?
I can, thank you. So just while Dom's sitting up here, I just wanted to kind of introduce myself. I'm going to give you just a really brief introductory of kind of what I've been up to with my firm. I founded my practice in 2007. I worked for all the big firms, I don't know if you know this, but most of these, almost all of the major sports facilities that happen across the world, they always somehow find their way through Kansas City. Kansas City has all of the design firms that focus, has a devoted market segment for sport. So I worked for Populus, some of you might have heard of them, they're the founder of the nation. Also worked for HGTV, was the granddaddy of all sports firms. And then a brief stint at 360 before they turned into another firm and then I started a common firm. I think one of the things you'll see with the projects that I'm going to present tonight, just really briefly, one, it just establishes credibility from the standpoint of, baseball is something I would agree, I'll get into the story of why that is, why is baseball the right facility size for a community like yourself, or really anywhere. And I'll say it right now, that it's because it's really the most flexible building type, whereas if it's a dedicated football, or dedicated soccer, or whatever, seating and the way that you have to enclose the space, there's an exponential cost associated with that, where you limit your flexibility. I think what you'll see is in some of these facilities, how that's changed over time. So really, my goal in all of this is really to show you some of the things that I see on a daily basis as I travel across the nation. Some of you may not have the opportunity to get as many places as I can, but it also gives some really good case studies in how I transitioned my career from wanting to drop only on huge some of these to really carrying that down with a focus on working with the uses of power days to generate economic redevelopment in communities. So if we go to the next slide, Dom. This just gives you a little, I've worked on twenty-nine ballparks as a major principal. All the projects themselves, a lot of them are more award, so I've been very blessed with my career since ninety-five up until this point with my firm Pendulum. Let's move to the next slide. I'll start. And one of the things I want you to look at is look at the size of these facilities. Day Air Ballpark, the Day Dragon, that was my first ballpark that finished, completed in 2000. I think one of the things you'll note about that is at that time, where the corporate dollar was really funding a lot of these projects, it was almost ninety-five percent funded by the municipality, which you'll see a kind of eternal turn now, which is a lot of public-private partnership now, as I would see this part of it completed. But one of the things that you'll note is there's lots of suites, and there's lots of seats. And that's one of the things that we started to move away from, to look for more flexibility in these types of facilities. Go to the next slide, please. I think one of the things that's interesting about the Day Dragons is they were bought, they were formerly the Rockford Cubbies, they were purchased for, I think, four million dollars. They got like me and the model in this downtown ballpark. They had no development around it, it was just basically this humble. And then I think they sold maybe five years ago for forty million dollars. So they had a huge evaluation on them because even though they've never had a winning season as far as won a championship or anything like that, they're rep civilians, they still earn such incredible entertainment value to the community, which I love and adore. The next slide. The next facility, there again, Day Air Ballpark. I think one of the things that they pioneered was very creative scoreboards. That scoreboard was one of the first, smoking from the dragon's nose, eyes blinking, and a lot of family entertainment burning in the ballpark is always packed. Next slide. Little Silverfield, again, it was built on an old brown metal yard, and then it was a hundred-year roundhouse in the friendly Arnie Building that you see in the front. I think one of the things that we did very well of this project was we were able to be creative and instead of knock down a hundred-year-old historic building, we renovated it and just kind of brought the ballpark into the building, incorporated into the building, which worked out really nicely. And then the start of the redevelopment of that whole neighborhood process, we touched right downtown. Again, that's being the home of the local squatter bat company that's just down the street. You see the bridge in the background there across the river. But again, the whole landscape of this facility changed, or the whole landscape of the area around it changed with the entry of the ballpark itself. Again, triple-A ballpark, super large scale. We'll continue to talk about that as we move forward to the next slide. Baseball grounds in Jacksonville, same thing, redevelopment project. We go to the next slide, Dom. Notice some of the features there, it was a double-A ballpark that was built to be able to change over to ten thousand seats and make it triple-A. Next slide. And then Truist Stadium. I think the important thing here is this was completed, I think, in 2009. This ballpark was the start of thinking about development outside of the ballpark envelope itself. So on the next slide, to see the master plan, we started with, the idea was that the ballpark was that catalyst for future development, which would be adjacent in theaters and offices and restaurant and things that have some business into the ballpark. And then as you go north of the plan, you see additional housing and things like that. Next slide, please. So now we entered 2007, when I started my practice. We go to the next slide, Seren team, if you want her. I think the thing that I really appreciate about ballparks themselves is, again, like, kind of going back to some of the things that Dom said, that apparently fun, that fan experience, that look in the field, that's something that's quite a bit different than major league baseball. You go to a major league baseball game, your focus is still on the field. But if you've ever been to a minor league facility or an independent facility, you'll note that it's more about the things and experiences that are happening off the field. The game that's being played on the field, we love it, yes, but it's really just the reason for us to be there. The rest of the entertainment is around, surrounding concourses and things like that. Food barbers and family fun zones and things like that. Next slide. So, again, when we think about baseball, the top dogs, the basketball beer, it's roasted peanuts. There's what I call emotional muscle memories, those feelings that we get when we may have gone to the ballpark with our grandparents or their father. I think about the times my father took me to a baseball game. Those are the things, those are the memories, those are my best sporting moments. It's really about who you're with, great things happen. And that's one of the things that we tried to incorporate into the ballpark as well. There's the next slide. The other thing that's interesting to me is ballparks are a lot like ours. It's funny that you don't, if you look around the nation and look at ballparks, some of them look like stations, maybe a couple, but not very many. So the idea that we have of these tightly facilities is that they can be in the context of communities that they're within, be the neighbors, and then create that opportunity for activity around. Next slide. One of the things that's interesting to me is we look at that, and this chart is a little bit out of date, but, you know, one of the questions that people often ask is, will, you have to build a ballpark and then someone leaves. Well, if you notice that eighty-seven percent of ballparks that were built more, were built more than ten years ago, sometimes fifteen and twenty years ago. And what happens is, a lot of times, these arrows, the ballparks that you saw before, which were built with these massive amounts of seats, they start to be taken over by the fact that that luster on them starts to wear off, whether it be operations, or whether it be loss of interest. But what happens is they end up being too big, so we go to the next slide. So, they're too big, and they start to look empty because fans are not feeling the place like they used to. I think I wanted to go back a little bit and just talk about, this is my intro into the history of baseball. You know, a hundred years ago or so, people would go to ballparks in top hats and suits, and I don't know if you've seen those pictures, but there were lots of sideline obstructions, columns, and seats, you see that even in some of the vintage ballparks. But Camden Yards in nineteen ninety-two changed all that. That's when we started to see, and we'll go to the next slide. Camden Yards is when you started to see the introduction of retail home concourses and commercial buildings that overlook into the ballpark itself. And that started with an idea that really changed the game. Next slide. Briefly feel, again, it's redeveloped quite a bit. It still has that luster of being authentic and within the neighborhood, but it started redeveloping, and what are they doing? They're bringing in fan amenities, they're bringing in premium amenities, semi-premium amenities. It's a very walkable neighborhood to get to, so it has that character of that old-school ballpark. They're starting to innovate within side with updated amenities. Next slide. And of course, there's Fenway Park, probably one of the most uncomfortable balls that I've ever sat in. And you see those columns right in the middle of the ballpark, I think my seat was right behind that ball. But it has that character that everybody wants in baseball. So again, you're not going to go into a ballpark that looks like a spaceship, you're wanting that brick, you're wanting that character that makes it stand alone. It's quirky, but it's urban and it's cool. Next slide. So 2005 is when I developed a concept, and you've seen it before a little bit, but if we go to the next slide here. It was the idea of taking some of these larger ballparks and breaking them down into smaller spaces. So this is an example of the ballpark in Memphis, where it was overbuilt. It had forty suites, it had fifteen thousand seats. So what I've been doing, as I launched my career in 2007, is coming back into these facilities and right sizing them. This team in particular was actually office-ing all of their team administration across the alley. And then they had, you know, ten or fifteen empty suites that were just not selling. So what we did was we moved the administration back into the ballpark itself, so the government investment was in the baseball. But we right-sized the facility by removing suites as well as removing seats, getting it down to a size that was more natural for the team. So that starts the idea, next slide, that starts the idea of how do you think about a ballpark when you first started to develop it, that you don't think of cities of old, you know, from the era where there was lots of corporate money that was funding all of these suites and things, that just doesn't exist. Next slide. But what we were able to come up with is something pretty dynamic in premium suites and premium areas behind home plate, where removing suites themselves or making bigger, moving move areas, and then introducing things like billiard halls in the ballpark that can be used not only during game time, but hot game time as a premium player. Next slide. And then incorporating local food and beverage, State Red Barbecue is a collaboration that the Red Army were doing with a local barbecue company, that's been right-sizing and plus move areas and things like that. Next slide. And so now we get at this ballpark village idea, the idea that we want to kind of blur the line between the secure line of the ballpark and ballpark proper and all of those outside of it. Now again, this is something that I developed back in 2005, and it really didn't start to happen until just maybe a few years ago, at the minor league scale. So we go to the next slide. Donkey Donuts Park, you see that facility was built in the center of downtown city. The bottom of your page is downtown proper, but this highway that bisects the city kind of was the eye-sector between downtown proper and what they call downtown four. So we knew all the ballpark features to spur future development. And now, you'll see the little housing just to the bottom of your screen below the ballpark across Trumble Street, that is now developed housing that looks pretty much into the ballpark. And there's opportunities for breweries as well as markets and housing, things like that as well. Next slide. You see some of the images of the ballpark itself. Next slide. Dom mentioned this previously, but with major league baseball taking over and retracting teams, I think they went from a hundred and forty games to a hundred and twenty, that created an opportunity in the marketplace for more independent teams. And but also, what I would say is right-sizing the built facilities so that they're smaller, they attract more economic redevelopment around the footprint. Next slide. That also created an opportunity to diversify seating. So all of the ballparks that I showed you previously, that were these giant ballparks and giant holes, what we started doing is looking into breaking the facility down and doing, instead of maybe a lot of the closed suites, we're doing what we call it, the picture, cabanas, older facilities that give you a premium field, but not a premium price tag, prime kind of building. And these are just behind the dugouts. This particular facility, which you'll see here in a second, has twelve toll. So when skylocks, or traditional skylocks or suite, probably costs two hundred thousand dollars per to build, this is more like twenty-five thousand dollars to build. So really, economical facility gives you that premium field and creates opportunities for flexibility for groups and the ballpark to generate. Next slide. So this is that ballpark, Jimmy John's Field in Unica, Michigan. And this was really our beginning, this was built on, I always say ballparks are almost built on tough sites. This ballpark was built on a landfill, so we had to go and eradicate all of that. But it created an opportunity for us to really do some nice things in a very compact footprint. So instead of this large bowl that expands all the way down to the foul lines, we really focused our attention behind home plate. We oriented the ballpark in a way that'll shade and shadow instead of sunburnt behind the ballpark and give a shade on the field. And so, with the flexibility, now we're able to roll concert stages out onto the field and put four thousand people there, as well as taking advantage of the premiums we above, then the cabanas on the sides and down below. It has one of the most unbelievable playgrounds, a wiffleball fields for kids, which is really an interesting thing. So we really designed this facility to be right-sized. It was at that time seventeen million to build, which can't be done today, but still very affordable for the time. And then it created all these different opportunities for the community to come and enjoy. One other thing that you can do is walk three times around the concourse here, that's a mile. So we have Club Eldred, those that come out, we have farmers markets that happen here. We've got concerts that happen here, we've got tournaments that happen. And then the geometry, the overall geometry of the field allows us to also be able to host football, cross, soccer, things like that. So it's artificial turf field, very flexible, very good for community use all around, year-round. Next slide. And one of the things, just because it's a small facility, doesn't have great amenities on materials. This is the triple A below the hole. So we took advantage of stacking the ballpark vertically in order to keep it compact, keep it affordable, cost-effective, but create some really cool things for the patrons to use. Next slide. So Hughes District in Gastonia, North Carolina, this is where everything has come together. This is kind of that Jimmy John's Field in point O. Our initial concept for this field, again, we worked closely with the municipality city manager who indicated that this needed to be an economic development project. So if you look at our initial concept, you'll notice that wall-to-wall is a sixteen-acre site, seven of which is, or nine of which is ballpark from North Triton Street there going vertically and Franklin, which connects to downtown, and then Hill Street. That's all ballpark stuff, you know, concourses, rock-clad walls, we had pit wall courts on the concourse. And the city manager came to me and says, you know Jonathan, you've really got to think about how do we create opportunities for development. Now, you remember the image that we saw just a few minutes ago, that ballpark village? Now you can fast-forward to this, now if we go to the next slide. We ended up with green spaces, which are, this is phase one, so again, you'll see this in the video that we're going to play here shortly, but we had to really think ahead. So phase one for Carmon Health Park was all the basic amenities that we need for the ballpark. Better concessions, or restrooms, or locker rooms. But these green spaces, I want you to take note of this as you look around the ballpark, we divided those up into parcels within that ballpark envelope. So normally you'd see all this development happen across the street. What we did was we crunched down the ballpark to the small... What we did was we crunched down the ballpark as small as we could, still making it flexible, and then created these green spaces. So we're one along Franklin Street here, the bottom of your page, that's a development parcel for office. Up Trenton to the height of your page, the green space there, that's a development parcel for hotel. And then talking around to the outfield of the field, that's a development parcel for house. So what you'll notice there is, if you look at the next slide, here's phase two. Now you have major development that is close to the entire ballpark. Instead of it being across the street, it's within the same envelope, so now all those missing teeth that we had before, they've gone away. And we've now started on phase two, planting, like the city is where we will develop her, then complete a hundred key hotel on the parcel along Trenton Street, and then also housing, two hundred units of housing over the ballpark. In each case, what you'll notice, there's precedent in the marketplace, I think Green Village South, South Carolina, passes the ballpark in Lansing, passes all of these housing precedents that are within the outfield of these ballparks, those are the units that are selling because they have used. So that energy that we create by, what I call the playing field surface, the green space, now we're able to develop around that and have major economic development impact. And I will say that I'm part of that in Gastonia, and that just developed my second office right across the street on Trenton, right across from the development. So as we develop, as we launch phase two here in the next month or so, the building will be there on site and part of. So when we go to the next, I think it's our video. This is pictures of the actual development as well. Artificial turf field, public art in the concourse, or in the public entry spaces there, and then you see the grass development, pad sites around. Next slide. This is the outfield entry, and ironically, just across the street, there's a old modeling office that is now becoming a brewery. And then up the street is the Trenton Mill, which is just redeveloped because of the ballpark being here, the old Trenton Mill site, which was, I can't remember how many square feet it was, but quite a big development that is now all lost that are now occupied by the city. And our office is just a little back. Next slide. So this will demonstrate this a little bit, if you play that. Okay, Simon lets you play the video. So I guess in closing here, I just want to talk about a little things that I think one of the things that you see is most important for the ballpark development of any sort is really planning for the future, thinking about infrastructure now, one of the worst mistakes that I see made in all of the ballparks I've been involved with is not thinking ahead. And so where the market is going, that's where we need to be looking. So plan ahead for infrastructure, thinking about development, around the ballpark development, that makes a big difference. Next slide. Technology is another thing. I think the future in sport is going to be that there's not going to be any static signage anymore. I think that lends to the flexibility of the facility itself, and it depends on the dollar when you think about your ability to, instead of having static signs, digital signs that can change over, now you can brand it and make the facility more sellable for the community itself. So you have birthday parties or big graduations or things, the whole facility is able to just with a physical button on your computer, change over a digitally branded for that specific event. Next slide. I think speaking about how we incorporate graphics way by technology is important. I think one of the most important things, I think Don mentioned this earlier, we've been working, Jesse Cole, no relation, but Jesse Cole has been at Banana's for the last fifteen years. And one of the things they're doing is incorporating selfie stations, and you know, that's where our team is right now, they're looking at, they're always operating by, so creating opportunities for QR codes and selfie stations, incorporating those things into the overall time as they're in place. Next slide. And then making the facilities three sixty-five. One of our partners in Hartford, Connecticut, in Donkey Donuts Park, one of the things that they do is top off at the ballpark, so they set up areas where you can tee off onto the field. And hit certain target zones, and then try to sponsor an event like Cowabunga, a huge success. Other major league teams are doing this as well. They're doing your scene all night in the premium club, so anchor space, be able to accommodate free people is important. A piece of your bottom line comes to your revenue generating opportunities, community, double dutch competitions on the field itself. Natural circus was at the ballpark one night, traveling motorcycle stunts and dirt bike tricks and things like that. So again, making this facility, being able to pay for it once, but use it for fifty or sixty different things is what's most important, and that's going to lead to sustainability. We've heard about green technology and sustainability from a green standpoint, but having sustainability is definitely the other. Thank you.
Jonathan, you still there?
I'm here.
Okay. Well, we're at the questions, and I know we only had a couple of minutes, but what I wanted to do is come in here and basically present you with who we are and who our partners are, and our partners' capabilities and our capabilities. We're looking to grow, we're looking to expand, Shervo is our destination that we want to do something with. And hopefully, we can partner together on a project in the future that the entire town will be proud of, the entire region will be proud of, more importantly. And you know, if you have any specific questions for me, I'd be willing to take an address. Kevin?
I'm interested, just in before being asked by our audience, thank you for being here, how many of you, by issue of hands, like this concept with that property? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make one comment on that. I think the idea of the multi, you know, having a multi-percentage stadium is kind of in everyone's idea. Naturally, for a town our size, you would want it to be used year round, and you can, and all the different items that you mentioned could make that happen.
You know, and I didn't put it up there, but a lot of towns and cities are doing in the winter time, they're putting ice rink in. They're putting an ice rink in for a couple of reasons, for their citizens to go and skate, because a lot of towns and cities do not freeze pounds anymore to where you can't go skating. But they're also playing competitive hockey games inside them, with either the high school level or college level in there, to bring a fan base out. And you know, most normal years, we're in a cold winter year, so unlike this year, but you know, there's a lot of things to do, but it's a great place to put a Chris Kendall on there too.
Hey Tom, how many acres total, if you go with this ballpark village concept, how many acres, including parking, would we need?
You know, I didn't look that closely at it, I just knew what raw total is over there. You know, and across the street, you've got a piece of property that, you know, could be developed along with it at the same time. But there's about a hundred acres that are on the, what I call the illiana area, and then the sports fields to the south. You know, youth sports is important to this town, and we want to be able to do things along with it that they can participate in. You know, we want them to be fans too, eventually, and we want to, you know, cheer on and support their efforts. But I think, you know, it's about a hundred acres there, that, you know, it depends, you know, I know what you're asking about, you know, how many acres do we need to use a ballpark? Correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, a ballpark is usually seven, eight acres, and if you do one with parking, that's another, you know, six or seven acres, so about thirteen acres total for a ballpark. But if you make it a town out of it, basically, or a neighborhood out of it, you know, that takes on other implications. And I think that that is something that, you know, will take more investigation on.
How's the running of work in terms of, I mean, you've got a stadium in Crump Point, correct? You've got the one, and was there a shared revenue?
Well, no, you know, usually what happens with minor league teams come into a city with a public entity, they just pay one big lease payment to the city. And then they, you know, are hiring the people to promote it and program it and do it on a year-round basis. With regards to Crump Point, they went in there when there was only the only facility available to them, Crump Point, was the Babe Ruth Field. After this season, now growing, so they'll need to look at a stadium development down there on their site. Crump Point's population's growing, the city's growing, I mean, there's a lot of growth in Crump Point, but you know, they've done a good job of attracting people. Whiting is a small ballpark, it's got a lot of limitations, but you know, we do make do there, we lease it from the city, is what we do. And the one thing that, which in terms of whiting, it lacks turf, so there's not a lot of other things other than baseball that you could play there. One of the things that we're trying to do is find the funds to turf it, so we can bring other elements into it. And you know, that's, I'm meeting with the mayor there in the next two weeks to talk more at length about that.
So it's a year-long lease, and then you guys have upper events, or is this?
Yeah, yeah, it's not something that...
Is it half of the year, and then we use it after?
No, we usually have this, is the entity will pay the city for to lease and run and manage the facility. All these facilities that you've seen, you know, have office space in them as well. The club wants to be on site, they want to be able to bring prospective clients through the ballpark, they need a place to workout for group sales, game based ticket sales, as well as advertising sales. So those are typical with what's done across our ballparks, you know, that work with the organization. I found most towns and cities do not have the staff to run all those events by themselves. They just don't. And it's easier to, for an organization to pay the city for the rate, to use it and program it. That's not saying if you have a perks event, or you know, and you want to use the ballpark for something, that can't be an arrangement that's, you know, certainly worked out between the two entities. A lot of these ballparks Jonathan showed you, they're open to ballpark to walk around to, I forgot what ballpark was shown at a mile concourse in it, people use it to walk to ballpark during the daytime and to be active. You know, the way I see it ultimately, one day, is you have about three hundred million dollars of economic development, come in there around the ballpark, and you build a community, and it lends itself to housing and growth from that perspective, but more importantly, a revenue perspective for the city and towns that we're in.
And I'm familiar with the Whiting ballpark, how many, what's the capacity seating in the Whiting ballpark?
Seating capacity there is somewhat limited, it's only about eight hundred people that we could put actually physically on a seat. There's a small burn, but it's mostly used by kids to roll out in it. It, you know, it is what it is, but ballpark design has changed over the course of the last thirteen years. It was built 2011, so conceived in 2010. And a lot has changed for the ballparks, you know, both from a design perspective as well as how to be used.
And what would be a common capacity for?
Oh, for the stadium we're talking about, twenty-five hundred, three thousand people in it?
Four thousand?
Yeah, I mean, twenty-five hundred, fixed seats, another, you know, five hundred in that and around it. And the reason is because if you go to a concert promoter, one of the things that he's willing to do is look what your capacity is, and then how many people you can put in the infield or the outfield for a concert. So for the range of acts, you know, goes up and down depending upon the number of people you bring into the ballpark. Whiting's very limited, we wouldn't get nobody to come there. And you know, we just didn't think about it in terms like that. Mayor Joe, great friend of mine, he was, he wanted to build a mini Babe Ruth Field, you know, and no other sports. Today, you can't survive, you got, the amount of investment into a facility like that has to be used on a year-round basis.
And I heard you mention Kevin Ansho, I heard you mention that you're very big on joining with the rest of the community, like if our baseball league had a major tournament and stuff, they needed that field, you guys would be all in.
Absolutely.
Same with our football in the winter time?
You mean ball, for football, yeah. And you know, if anybody plays hockey in the winter, I think that would be a heck of an idea, you know. There's a few region teams around that are hockey teams, I know Purdue Northwest has a hockey team as well. And I think Crump Point just hosted an outdoor hockey event at Bulldog Park, which is, I don't know if it was ever designed for that, but it made it happen.
And that would go along with the town, like having festivals and?
Yes, absolutely, a hundred percent. You know, you want people coming here to town, from outside town, because they'll in essence adopt Shervo as their hometown, even though they don't live here, because you have fun going on. If you look at the size of Whiting, forty-five hundred people, you've all heard of Prodigy Fest, right? Three hundred fifty thousand people a weekend, whoosh, a lot of people. But they talk about that nonstop for the last twenty-five years. So that's an important part of Whiting's culture, of what they created there.
So do you, you maintain the facility?
Yeah.
Even if it's not during your season?
Yes.
In the off-season, you still maintain the facility?
Yes, yes. That's the most ideal lease, make your problems right as they happen, right on top of it. You know, most leases are an arrangement between the town and the city, from a perspective, you know, the club handles under a certain amount, you know, over that, you know, an engineering thing or, you know, fiscal aspect of the stadium, that needs, you know, be talked between both entities.
So like if our department was involved with you, you would be in strong contact with our department's department?
Yes, whoever you want, us to liaison with, you know, whether it's the personal department or building department, whatever, you know, it's different with every municipality.
Do we have any other questions for Don?
I don't have, thank you, Tom. Anybody?
Our board members?
Thank you so much for having me.
Staff?
Anyway, I gave everybody handouts, our capability is in my deck, so...
We thank you very much, Tom.
In my cart, so if you have questions, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second presentation is one of our local engineering companies, American Structure Point, who's been involved in many recreation projects in the area and all over the state. They are noted for their one-stop shop, the fact that they do assessment, planning, engineering, and building.
Mr. President, can we take about a five-minute break? Okay, thank you.
We'll take a five-minute break a little bit to get this done.
Thank you.
My next presentation tonight is one of American Structure Point.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council, Bar Corps, staff and residents, thank you for the opportunity. Mr. President, Town Council, Bar Corps, staff and residents, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to present. My name is John Kennedy. I'm Business Development Director for American Structure Point.
The mic can just hang on a minute.
Sorry. John Kennedy, Director of Business Development. So tonight, we're here to talk about... Our presentation is about a process, an approach, that we have used with other communities and are looking to take a site and make it into a sports complex, a recreational facility, sort of about a process. So my job is simple, to introduce the team, give you a little history of our firms, and then get out of the way and let them explain the process. So with us tonight is Dan McCluskey. Dan McCluskey is a senior project architect. His division, his team at American Structure Point is specific to municipal facilities in sports and recreational facilities. I'm going to take away some of his teams, some of the facilities you are going to be aware of, the Maryville Community Center and the Sports Complex. Those are some of the few, both indoor and other facilities he has worked on. Eric Wolverton, he is Director of Design Development out of our Maryville office. Eric will oversee some of the civil engineering work that would be needed to service this facility, access points, drainage, parking, both sites. And then online, we have Brandon Dowling. Brandon Dowling is a principal at Johnson Consulting, and so he will help us with the deep dive on gathering the data, and it's about a process. So I'm going to go give a little brief history of both firms. I know Brandon's going to talk a little bit more about Johnson Consulting, but they are a real estate and hospitality consultant. They do strategic planning, market, and I think what will be important for the town is financial feasibility studies. So they will help us with the deep dive on the data and some costs. That is always important in a decision-making process. American Structure Point, we are a architectural engineering firm. We are six hundred strong. We are headquartered out of Indianapolis, and we have a local office in Maryville. We have approximately twenty employees in our Maryville office. We are the fourth largest architectural firm in the state of Indiana. We do everything from corporate offices, headquarters, to municipal buildings, parking structures, and of course, sports and recreation. We're also the largest engineering firm in the state of Indiana. We have multiple disciplines, road, drainage, we'll look at environmental utilities, anything that we will address when we look at this site if it's going to go for a sports and recreation facility. So our approach, we come here with a clean slate. What we're going to try to provide the town is information, resources, to make decisions on what is best for the site. So we look at things like previous work, potentially park planning that's been updated, we'll look at that. We'll do a deep dive on the demographics. Is Sherrville getting younger? Is Sherrville getting older? Because when everyone thinks of a sports complex, they think of, you know, grade school, middle school, high school. We want this facility to be used not only from three o'clock to nine o'clock, but I'm fifty-four, my needs aren't as good as they used to be. We want it to be used for all residents in the town of Sherrville, so we want to make sure that we're addressing the needs of those can't play as part as they used to. We'll also look at, we'll recommend a public hearing. There's no one that knows the town of Sherrville and what their needs are than the residents. So we will ask them, what are some of the facilities that you think would be good for the town? What are some of the fields that are overutilized, underutilized? What would we rate at the site? Again, what Brandon and us will look at, we will look at the cost to actually build a sports and recreation facility. And what's probably most important to the park director and the park board is how you operate it. What's the operating budget? What's the staff's needs? So we will take all that information and provide the town with information to make a good decision. And just to make you feel comfortable are capabilities. I think if anyone has grandkids or kids that play any sport, whether it be baseball, softball, soccer, one of the most known facilities in the state of Indiana is Grant Park West. Both Dan and our firm worked on that facility. So we have the capabilities to not only help you evaluate, as it says, a complete design process. We're going to help you evaluate it, make sure it's the right decision for the town, and knowing you can also execute it and help you design it. It will be a seamless process from start to finish. One firm that can help you take it through to division, to completion. So I appreciate you giving us time. After our presentation, we'll have ability to answer questions and do questions and answers. So with that, I will turn it over to Dan McCluskey. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Good evening, everybody. I did want to do a quick mic check on Brandon Dowling. Can you hear us?
Good for you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much. As John said, we are a team of many. We have many disciplines within our firm, and we have great partners like Johnson Consulting to bring projects like this to reality for towns like you. Across the top, you've got myself, Brandon, Eric Wolverton, John Kennedy. Back in the office, we've got Brandon Hooper, a very talented designer and director of our architecture group. Bill McHuen, one of our senior designers and master painters, worldwide experience with a myriad of building types. And then Johnson Hinshaw, one of our senior landscape architects. What we hear, what we've heard so far, that this is a site project with some vertical elements, be it a stadium, be it a rec center, you know, that those are the types of things we're going to find out in the process of what's best for the town, what's needed, what's desired, so we'll work through that. But Johnson certainly has the talent for understanding how to sculpt the site from a landscape architect's standpoint, and I bring it running vertical when we hit the stadium, the rec centers, things like that. As we've said, American Structure Point is a one-stop shop. We have architecture and interiors, landscape architecture, civil engineering, planning and economic development, which is, I think, a key component here of understanding how this facility could impact this neighborhood, the town, the region, you know, that circle keeps extending out from this site. And I think we can help as a team determine what are the best steps forward with that. Eric and his team certainly, as we were arguing in the meeting, he's like, you see the site? You know, you're turning off thirty into this. There's certainly a traffic analysis. He's already researched some of the numbers, and we need to know how that's going to affect how all this would function on any scale that would be going to improve that site. In-house, we have a survey. There is a lot of topography actually out there with the existing old stadium or the speedway, but we have that in-house. A couple of tall-sized things at the bottom, cost estimation. Once we kind of get out of this initial programming phase where Brandon and his team can help us understand some preliminary ideas, once we get some pen to paper, get some things sized, we have cost estimation teams that come in and help us understand real-world, real current dollars and cents of these projects. With... It is not meant to scare, it's just it's a different climate these days than it was even two years ago. And then MEB design, and, you know, I would link that in with technology as well. As the previous gentleman was saying, the technology within a development like this is very important from wayfinding, from branding, to communication, to the patrons to understand what they're attending at any given time. We certainly, as John said, I've got twenty... Let's see here. I've got twenty-five years of experience in sports and rec. I've done projects at university level, University of Arkansas, Louisville, Illinois State. And when I came to Structure Point, I've been with Structure Point about eleven years, and we have had the great opportunity to work on some real local, regional projects here in the state of Indiana. As John mentioned, I worked on the Green Harbor Rec Center. That was a key program element for their parks department to give their community some key event space, fitness space, basketball space, you know, they wanted to have that amenity. There's also an outdoor football and soccer venue in the back portion of that site. Low Stadium up on the left, that's a right-sized stadium for the city of Lafayette. That was a rebuild of their existing stadium from the thirties, forties. It was rotated in the wrong direction. It was nondescript from an entry sequence into the town. That was also an economic, but yet also identity place and identity solution for that portion of town. The mayor has a grand vision of how you enter into downtown Lafayette, so that was a key project that I think could be a component of what your facility could be. We did do the Whiting Stadium before my time, and certainly as the gentleman said, things have changed over the last ten years of stadium design and what, how you create those spaces for the spectators. The other three projects is really, are really the ones that I think lend themselves to having us explain the process of how to get to those type of facilities. The two on the left are still conceptual in nature. They're being proposed by municipalities and private investors in trying to bring new venues to the same sort of wood bath summer league themes in their respective communities. And then as John mentioned, I had previous experience with working on Grant Park and then Structure Point was the master engineer for the park. But it was set up in a way to invite, you know, defined circulation through the site and also, you know, there was, I don't know the numbers, but certainly information about how many baseball, how many soccer. Then in my work with Structure Point, we have added private development with developers of the Pacers Athletic Center, which is an indoor basketball facility, and also ProX Athlete Development, which is a baseball-centric facility, which everything fed off that development, which I think could happen with your facility as well. You kind of set up some key elements and then bring the private side in to continue that growth. Brandon, I'd like you to speak to how you and Johnson Consulting bring value to these type of projects.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Thank you all for having us. Just a little bit about Johnson Consulting. We're celebrating almost seventy years in operation. We are based out of Chicago, so not too far away. Unfortunately, we're one of those spaceship stadiums in our Chicago Bears and Southern Fields, so very familiar with the stadium concept. We specialize in really serving development advisors to municipality, private developers all throughout the U.S. I am a principal with the firm, and I specialize purely in sports entertainment. With Johnson Consulting, we also do a lot of media, hospitality, mixed-use developments, consulting as well. We're primarily just serving independent market consulting, private feasibility studies, and really helping particularly what economic business that's financed and trends may be often are part of these sort of D3 public-private partnerships that help bring these various developments to fruition. So that's our role, serve as part of this team and have served with American Structure Point, and we'll talk about a little bit about that project here shortly. But while I share a few similar items in the next two slides of development that we have worked on, a show where our value client is related to the community itself. This is Wiregrass Ranch, Pasco County, just outside of Tampa, recently opened, whole life purpose indoor as well as outdoor. We were retained by the county financial advisor. They had a private developer come in unsp listed and presented a pretty substantive baseball field concept as part of the first tour of the franchise, so they wanted to advise it. And ultimately, what we have recommended to the county that we have built that for the saturation within that area, for Florida, and it would be better to start doing more multi-purpose entertainment. The client and community there was to have its BA in tourism and regional attraction because there was tourists operating and flying to that. So again, sort of being that third-party independent advisor on behalf of the county and really stewarding the direction that was first with them, and ultimately, what we did from here is a conclusion of our feasibility study, we also served as sort of an honor to have in helping the citizens and RFP, RPI for that private development that came along, that came with an operator. This also had an outdoor amphitheater hotel that came across with it. So much like we heard before, you know, we're a student of tradition in professional sports, then it sort of went down to Meyer Park and now we're seeing the evolution of these mixed-use facilities and entertainment districts, really expected to follow around these sports recreational camps as well. And that aside, here's another example, very similar, but this was the gentleman that was presenting it to us. So we earned his trust, and he hired us to review it in a different location. And here, the reason why we want to show this, is that there were some existing ballfields there. This is the former home of Cincinnati Reds, pre-training in Plant City, and so part of that city and the parks and recreational program was how do we leverage the assets that we put to the Cincinnati Reds from a model that relates to some of these resources that are being used on and off, not fully heavy recreational programming. And ultimately, what evolved from this is that we can strengthen the site, you know, the development of these ballfields were really constraining on the overall financial viability. And so part of it was to develop that ancillary real estate, kind of help process of design, the endeavor and the operations of these sports facilities. And the reason why I share that, you know, when we start to do numbers and pencil, you know, it's a question that we get quite often with communities, you know, is there... We sort of said no, or we didn't think it would work. And quite often, this was one of those. And it's still, today, Gary, as many may know him in the group, is a former baseball player, you know, we're still highlighting the narrative of ours, really a previous achievement within the segments, and us giving them the optimism around, you know, really not being a viable project at that particular location. So that same sort of skillset process will part of talk about here, a little bit, what we did with Hammond, we want to share those examples as part of our reporting of this project.
Thank you, Brandon. As Brandon mentioned, what we want to highlight tonight is a synergy between Johnson Consulting and American Structure Point, a success story really, in the Hammond Sports Complex. Understanding it as a vertical structure where your project could be a mixture of vertical and horizontal project. If you're not familiar, Hammond Sports Complex is a approximately one hundred and thirty thousand square foot, six quarters basketball, two indoor soccer facility with a small community component, a central access that serves as an organizing element for the building. Through some funding strategies that the city was using on this, that community aspect was very important. There was an upper desne walkway on the interior of the building that is completely accessible from a non-ticketed aspect during sort of weekday hours outside of tournament time. There's indoor adding cages, there's, you know, we tried to put as much into this facility that would benefit the community, but also drive revenue from a tournament standpoint, and it's been a booming success. But that success came on the heels of a market analysis that Johnson Consulting had done for the city. And Brandon, if you could kind of walk us through the process that it took to get there.
Thank you, Dan. And so in order to highlight some of the stuff that was taking part in the feasibility study and the methodologies relating to process, it's very similar for our various projects that we worked on. And in the very first step, it's really meeting with the client yourself, the very stakeholders that you would have complained, that we parts of that, and other community stakeholders, and really trying, what do we want to discuss with this project, what are the driving goals, right? And that is something that we spent a lot of time with the city and Hammond understanding. Did we want to do a particular site? What are we hoping and aiming to achieve? And then from there, we looked at that and doing, and that gives the very stakeholders, meeting with sports organizations, academy department, hoteliers, business owners, and analyzing, you know, the demographics of the local market as well as the regional, really trying to understand what are those gaps of our niche opportunities in the city and this potential development that would really help differentiate it from any regional competition, looking at the national... competition, looking at the national and local sports trends, right? Understanding that where we are, where the trend are leading us, where they're designing and still the programming standpoint. And really all that sort of a culmination of what we like to call a market-driven program, right? And in the end, I hope, of course, Chicago's not the market of Hammond more standard than it was a year ago, it has to be very community-oriented and market-driven, right? So I understand that, talking to those various stakeholders, looking at the data and analyzing what that data really means to the overall operational viability is all part of that process, right? And the next slide kind of show, you know, just a brief outlook of some of the stakeholders that we've had, you know, either in the focus groups or surveys, really dive in and understand various nuances of these stakeholders to the potentiality and successes more. And again, with economic development, the CBD, the hoteliers, their parks recreation, you know, then going back to some of the goals of the clients where we want to satisfy the rural residents first and foremost. We want to be able to, you know, on a long-term standpoint, make this an economic development engine that can really re-site a life area and make it all safer first and so forth. And then focusing on one of those white presentations, right? So that was all part of that content, that all part carried through our interviews and understanding various weaknesses of this process. And the next slide here, this is some of the common themes from those, right? And this is really kind of taking in, understand, you know, what is the community really seeking and retiring, you know, the things that we heard a lot as a path. You know, there really isn't a home for all the population, for all to do indoor exercises and recreation. So that's the concept, the notion of the elevated walking track. And really, you know, what we heard from a lot of sports groups, particularly club sports, which, you know, where they were, you know, and for the red bull tree from the revenue standpoint, that they're losing all of their kids to, you know, just across the border to Illinois clubs that have far superior facilities. And so we need to understand, you know, with a venue like this, we'd be able to recruit and bring, you know, a local organization. And then, you know, what happened at that place was really creating a pit, right? There was a pit on the site in Hammond, and it was, you know, a name to kind of how do we use this as a redevelopment and economic catalyst to redevelop this area. So what were the overall results? Again, coming back to those early on goals of, you know, strengthening to the block, you know, growing more of its life, ultimately, is it a place for our market-driven program? You know, whether the things we want to add, some pockets in the mayor and the staff, you know, we love this to be, and want this to be a local facility, and if there's an ability to be a regional facility, that would be terrific. But it first has to start with the residents, right? And so part of our market assessment was really looking at, if we were to be a more regional tournament point, are we able to support it? There's all the support and destruction that are needed when you go and shift, you need some tourism type facilities and one of those main things are hotels. And so, you know, there was a background of that town at time, and then there's spirit at that time and all this. But that was part of our recommendation, was our focus on more of a local league play, one-day, drive-time tournaments, as the demand and the solution of this facility becomes. And designing in a way that we can create it later as the demand comes to fruition and to further costs. So, you know, the facility is now becoming a known commodity on some of the more regional type tournaments. So certainly, smaller and especially to be able to give a capability to meet the need locally as they're all served up to the really big community facility. So just to name the next one, it really had a whole program that we ended up with, right? And so this is, again, with an ability to sort of expand upon. There's six-quarters there is what we add on. There's two indoor turns, there's a walking track, there's locker rooms, we have some adding cages, a pitching tunnel. There was some family entertainment space that was, you know, in the future phase. And again, that is something that we're starting to see evolve, either the full kind of building or ancillary developments, again, for a place where brother sister, parent kid, or who would be, whoever it may be, a participant, and something that can do before or during or after the tournament. And then there was a senior sort of youth multi-purpose environment, highly utilized for birthday parties and various meetings throughout the community.
Thank you, Brandon. With that, we're going to shift a little bit into the design process that we facilitate by utilizing that information. So again, this is one of our example of projects from a city in Ohio. This project has a multi-tenant in it. You can certainly distinguish the sports component. A portion of this ownership of this site was a doctor, so there's a medical component and a hospitality component. That, the program was sort of defined a little bit, you know, for that project, so we needed to test the site. But, you know, there's certainly in a traditional design process, we want, you know, as you can see at the bottom of the screen, there are plenty of burnery. That's where we want to start. That's where Johnson Consulting is going to help us, considering those program elements. Then schematic design development, construction documents, those are American Structure Point's bailiwick, with input with, from Johnson Consulting on their experience with the similar type of projects. But we want to shift that design effort to get the decisions out of the way as early as possible so that cost of change doesn't hit the project and your opportunity to influence when it's a bit more fluid of a design is still within your hands. So we want to focus all that effort up at the major influence end of the spectrum and then work through the process so that it is a step-by-step, methodical effort. We call this the double diamond design process, where there's kind of two phases. We would want to start with the definition of the problem or the opportunity. I hate the word problem, I always love the word opportunity. Empathize with your stakeholders, your community's visions for this area. Maybe they have great memories of this area. Maybe they want to spread, you know, continue those on in some manner in this development. And then we want to take that after those, you know, reform those user insights and then prototype, ideate, test those theories to come to a solution, defining and solving the problem to come to a solution. And those can happen within visiting sessions, user group meetings, a lot of the things that Johnson Consulting had highlighted that we did in Hammond, facility tours, let's go look at Grand Park, let's go look at Loeb Stadiums, you know, look at your competition, understand what your other communities are enjoying, or maybe they have some issues and maybe it can inform some growth in your community. And then within the design process, and more of the technical design process, once we understand the components, we've certainly got professionals that deal with every aspect of the design. We will share, we'll interact with your stakeholder team, produce concepts that will lead us to a solution. So we take all these people, the owners, the user groups, the consultant teams, the design teams, the community, all that's going to be jumbled up into a process that's going to come to a clear and defined solution for the project. The results, as we highlighted a little bit before, the Hammond Sportsplex and Community Center is a success story as a vertical project. The stats are staggering in some manner of the use of this throughout the year, the tourism dollars, the players, the occupancy of the building. And then this is a public, you know, information from the mayor, mayor Hammond, $1.3 million in concessions based on their pieces within the building. And that's just within the building, that is not outside developments. So I want to talk a little bit about how we would analyze your site. You see these boards off to the side, and they've got, we've looked at your site, I believe we understand some of the basic parameters of the site, and certainly there's a lot more to do, but we wanted to kind of understand what you guys are dealing with, understand the bounds, understand your neighbors. There's some wetlands that our team has investigated that we might need to stay away from and, you know, consider in any design solution. Eric and his team, as I said before, Eric was very focused on the vehicular traffic aspect of this type of project. What's the demand? What's the traffic analysis of this project? Heavy and heavy traffic along 30, and then the sort of sub-corridors at the rampabout, and how that access is on the other side of the development? How do we tie those together? How do we give multiple opportunities to enter and exit the site and work with your neighbors with the Roman complex and your investments that you've made in the fields on your site? How does all that play into a complete development? Parking is certainly a key piece. Is it tournament traffic? Is it stadium traffic? Is it, you know, rec center traffic? We want to understand. That is certainly not a study of where it should go, but it's just an idea that we need to factor that in into the site design. Pedestrian circulation. This is a really important one in my mind. And as I said earlier, we have landscape architects that focus on it to understand the pedestrian experience through a project like this. Anecdotally, I had a project in Clarksville, Indiana, and it was a Little League park that was, it was from the 50s and, you know, and then into the mid 2000s. It had come in and done a disrepair, but it was a amalgam, you know, orientation of fields that had no orientation to it. Nobody wanted to go there. So we reoriented it, reconfigured all the fields, has a clearly defined pedestrian's access, and I think that certainly poses a promising success to any project that a family, an individual wants to come where they feel like they can, you know, feel invited and circulate appropriately. Outdoor stadium design and site design, we're going to study sun angles. Baseball stadium design is most typically a northeast orientation is most appropriate for spectators and players. So we would study that in relation, maybe there's some slight tweaking. Lafayette Loeb Stadium is actually almost due north, but it was based on what we had to work with with the site. So site context and constraints are something we have to study as we develop the master plan of the site. Wind direction, predominantly southwest directional. Then we're going to layer all those components together to define a design and inform the design of the site. This is a, there's a lot of components to a design, and we, as American Structure Point and Johnson Consulting, understand every single one of them. With that, I want to open up to any questions that you might have for our team.
Dan, on the, on the marital site?
Mm-hmm.
How much land is there?
I don't know the exact number. If you're familiar with the site, it was the old Y and W Theater, is that Eric, that was the Dragon Theater. I don't know the number. It is about 88,000 square foot facility with, I believe, about 400 parking spots. But, Dan, that was defined by the need for event space because, you know, their facility is not geared towards tournaments like Hammond's would be. And Hammond's actually in the midst of some other developments going on around that they're increasing their parking because that's an issue for them. But Merrillville was, you know, specific, more of a community center than a tournament center. I believe they do bring in some smaller tournaments and some other smaller events, but that was, I believe that's about. And it's got actually about 30,000 square foot footprint available for development on the southwest corner of that facility and that plot of land. I apologize if you don't know the acreage.
But something at that size, even the Hammond site would fit comfortably on that.
Yeah, definitely. Like the Grand Park Field, or what's called Grand Park Field, now it's Pacers Athletic Center at Grand Park. That was eight acres, I believe, and that was a 80,000 square foot facility with another 400 parking spots. So it's, I think Merrillville's site is a little bit bigger, but that's a good comparison. So, but Grand Park is also 700 plus acres, so it's a large development.
Dan, who operates the Merrillville building?
That's through the Parks Department. John might know a few more details than I do, but it is a municipally-owned and managed facility.
What about Hammond?
Same.
Same town employees?
City employees.
City employees. For an example, the Loeb Stadium, and I also did Kokomo Stadium in Kokomo, those are lease deals similar to what the gentleman's speaking to. I don't know all the specifics. Those are, you know, confidential with the, between the city and the team, but fairly similar in, although I believe Lafayette maintains a little bit more of the maintenance and upkeep than the team does. Kokomo, I do believe that the team manages a lot of the upkeep. So certainly a business, it's a business deal to be done, you know, down the road of how that whole thing would happen.
Okay, thank you.
So wait, just a second. When you guys were looking at this, were you primarily looking at Illinois Raceway? And that primarily the space you're looking at? Because Roman Park bucks right up against it, and I know one of the things that we've all talked about is making sure that all of that is kind of very seamless and just made a pretty substantial investment in Roman. We want to make sure that that's.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, my understanding, just from preliminary discussions we've had, is Roman Park is certainly over a property line, right? But doesn't mean it can't feel like the same park, right? So that's just part of the process that we would go through to see, you know, it needs to be an agreement, you know, between everybody to kind of work together and create a bigger thing for everybody, you know, everybody needs it to prosper.
Yeah, I totally agree with that because we've spent part of our money updating our park there, along with our girls' softball there, our Sherrolo baseball is nearby.
Correct.
So we definitely are in a respect.
And we certainly want to respect that. We want to respect all the history that you've put into that site. But again, it's an opportunity, I think, to see what the vision could be with all the right information and a process to figure out what that is.
Sorry, Merrillville site, I've been in the center.
Okay.
There's a football field behind it.
That's correct.
Is it connected to the parking lot? I guess everyone, no, we're back that far.
Yeah, yeah, no, the, yeah, the football field is accessed from the north end, north side of the building, more the event center side of the facility. And then there's a, and, you know, a success story of that project was also, they had gone through some programming exercises over the years, and then when we came on, we kind of digested what they really could afford, come up with a, you know, there's a balance of programming, but also, you know, from an architectural standpoint, we need to pick the right systems to build the building efficiently, cost effectively. And I don't know all the numbers, there was a CN project actually managed by an in-town core construction here in Sherrolo managed that project, and we came in millions under budget. So that's why they agreed to add that field, so.
You talked a lot earlier on about the process working all the way through from start to finish, and I take it you have a good relationship working with Ed Dot?
Yeah, I can't speak to it, but on the horizontal side, maybe Eric could. Sure, Eric Holden, I know a lot of people in the room, but I've been a resident of Sherrolo since 2004. I've worked primarily on transportation projects in the region. We have an outstanding working relationship with the Lurford District, which would be the district that Sherrolo lies in. And so, yeah, we're very comfortable working with them, obtaining whatever permits may be needed, working on improvements that will obviously be needed on US 30 in terms of adding turn lanes into the site to make it safer. There's 42,000 vehicles which traverse US 30 daily, so it really needs to be safe. In addition to those turn lanes, we're going to assess drainage improvements in the area. Those are all things that we've worked with in Ed Dot and the Lurford District, not.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Park one. Any questions? Snap. No more question. Uh, Dan, Dan, we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you guys very much for your, your time.
Thank you. John, you have any, appreciate.
Thank you.
Now, that would conclude our presentations for today. The study session is adjourned. Thank you for coming.